Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the City of San Carlos City Council's successor agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority regular meeting, May 14, 2018. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Minaas, or anyone else wishing to have something changed. All right, thank you. A report from closed session, Mr. Rubens?
There's no report from closed session tonight.
All right, 5A, we have some presentations. First one is a presentation on updates from the California Water Service.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for the privilege of being able to present to you an update from California Water Service. My name is Ross Moylan. I'm the district manager. I worked for the company for about 22 years now. I'd like to introduce Mike Oates. He's our assistant district manager. Worked for the company for about 20 years. And Shannon McGovern, who's worked for our company and before working for Cal Water, actually worked, involved with the state senate.
Guarantee she hasn't worked for the company for 20 years, because she would've had a start when she was 12 then.
Correct, thank you. So just briefly, this is kind of our area where we serve. And as you noticed, the logo is in three other states besides California. We have some small operations in Washington, New Mexico, and Hawaii. But our primary systems are in California. We are the third largest private investor-owned utility in the United States, largest in the West, and have nearly 1,200 employees now. And our headquarters is in San Jose. Oops. So we have 24 unique operating districts in California, and we're proud that each of our districts has a customer center to help and assist our customers. And our employees are also very much part of the community and live in the communities that we serve. Kind of an overview of our Bay Shore District, and kind of the key things to point out here with Bay Shore, and as you can see the other systems in California, is that our primary systems are South San Francisco, San Carlos, and San Mateo, and our offices in San Mateo. And there's some smaller systems there listed as well. Kind of a general overview of our system makeup. Oh, we have 522 miles of pipe, and I won't read all of these. We have six wells. And to point out, those wells are not located in the city of San Carlos, nor do those wells serve this community. Those wells are actually located in South San Francisco. A various booster pump storage facilities, 53,000 service connections, and I think another important stat is the 7,500 gallons of water used by the customers in the system. This is kind of representative of a general overview of a water system, not San Carlos in particular. But generally, you see a surface supply there off of the top right, some underground aquifers where basically a well would pump from, the storage tanks. And kind of also that I think is important to point out is the two white little stations there. Those stations represent where we would take water samples on a regular basis to ensure water quality meets all standards. And I'm proud to say that the standards in San Carlos are met each and every day. And you'll hear a little bit more about that from Shannon later. I'll skip over this. So your water supply here, if you did not know already, is primarily from the Hetch Hetchy system. The Hetch Hetchy system actually originates in Yosemite. And I can tell you, for many customers across the state that we serve and other agencies, they would be very proud to have a water source from Yosemite, you know, based upon the quality, clarity, and as you can see a picture here, that's actually the Hetch Hetchy reservoir in Yosemite. And you can see a lengthy pipeline from the Yosemite Mountains to the Bay Area. Another question that comes up is, we heard about the drought. We're thinking we're out of a drought, but how do things look this year? We've heard stories that there was still a drought in place. It looked like things weren't going well. I think most of us know that we had kind of what was referred to as a miracle March, and even some precipitation in April, and that really helped pull things out. So a quote here, again, I won't read this to you, is from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, where we get that Hetch Hetchy supply from as a wholesaler. And things look good for 2018. But we live in California, and I think we all recognize that the governor has also declared that conservation is really a way of life, and we need to keep that in mind as far as conservation's concerned. Every drop we save today is really a drop that could be available for us tomorrow. This is some interesting information that's on our website. Again, I won't read everything here in the interest of time, but it really points out the savings that are occurring. You'll notice the reference of Mid Peninsula District at the top, just so there's no confusion. Mid Peninsula is referred to as San Mateo and San Carlos system. That's based upon reporting standards of when the district was originally formed. So that's why that's listed as Mid Peninsula. But you may ask, how is San Carlos doing exclusively? So on the next slide, I really want to point out the job that San Carlos did during the recent drought. We had a mandatory target reduction, as you can notice over to the top, of 16 percent. That was to meet the overall requirement of 25 percent reduction using the baseline of 2013. You can see how San Carlos did. San Carlos took the issue very seriously and responded with behavioral changes and saved considerable amounts of water year after year. And you can still see the savings in 2017. We're seeing across the state increased usage, which is expected when some of the drought surcharges and drought order was lifted. But San Carlos is still maintaining conservation measures, which is definitely significant. We offer programs for both our residential and commercial customers to really help conserve water, and I ask everybody to kind of take advantage of that. Look at our website at www-calwater.com/conservation. There's plenty of information, again, I won't read all this, to really help customers save water. Along with the commercial conservation programs that are listed here, there's quite a few listed, again, to make sure that there's tools available. If there's ever any questions about our programs, please give us a call at our office, and we'll be happy to assist. I'm going to turn this portion over to Mike to talk a little bit about some of the infrastructure improvements and what that means to the community.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So infrastructure improvements, what does this mean to you? Safety, reliability, emergency preparedness is what we really look at when we're, you know, looking at our infrastructure improvement program. I'll go over just some of the highlights of projects we've recently done in San Carlos. Our station 103, it resides at the top of Hilltop Drive, major pump station for us. We did a complete revamp, new pumps, piping, electrical, generator, landscaping. We involved the community, the neighbors around this area early, and it was neat to, you know, meet with them early, talk to them about schedule, get them involved. We got them on our side, and the project, it impacted them a lot. We were there for over a year, but it really worked out well in the end. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony in March. A lot of the neighbors came out for that, and it was neat to talk to them about how the station works. Some of the other projects, we have a new tank, new storage, 250,000 gallons at our station 119. It resides up off of Melundy, Melundy Drive near Crestview. Another 300,000 gallons we've added at our station 120 at Los Fientos. Big main replacement program we have at Cal Water, this represents, this slide represents the system in San Carlos. The blue lines are projects that were completed between 2015 and 2018, and the orange are projects that proposed for 2018 to 2021. We're looking right now at about a half a mile a year we're replacing a water main. We're trying to get to about a one mile is where we want to be, which we're going to propose in the next rate case. So recent accomplishments, we've improved reliability and service. We've added generators to improve our liability for fire protection. We've retrofitted some of our tanks to improve their stability, introduced remote automation to some of our pump stations. We've upgraded the distribution system, and we replaced several miles of water main in the past 10 years. And we survived the drought, thank goodness. And I'll turn it back over to Ross.
Thanks, Mike. So some upcoming key projects. We have a rate case every three years, and we're in the midst of that filing right now. Shannon will talk a little bit about what to expect with that and more information to come. As Mike already talked about, some of the other infrastructures or improvements that are planned and proposed, that we're seeking approval to fund through the rate case that's coming up. And some additional auxiliary power to really be prepared for emergencies. And security is something that I think is important in everybody's mind, to make sure that we have enhanced security at all of our sites. Some challenges that we're dealing with is really just the aging infrastructure of our systems, to make sure that we're not ignoring crucial things that need to be replaced before they fail, avoid service interruptions, et cetera. And really making sure our customers are informed about what's going on in their neighborhoods with their water system, and make sure that they have that assurance. And finally, just really balancing all of that need for improvements with having reasonable rates, and keeping that in the mind, and making sure that customers understand what's coming. I'll turn the next slide over to Shannon.
Thank you, Ross. Thanks for having us, Mayor and Council. We are very proud of our involvement in the community in San Carlos, and we look forward to actually getting even more involved. So you'll see on this slide some of the, just a few of the interactions and support that we provide for the community in terms of sponsorships of events and interaction with the public. Staying close to our customers is very important to us, and we take great pride in our involvement in the community. One thing that Ross mentioned that I wanted to circle back on is our rate case that we're entering into. The rate-setting process is pretty unique, and it's actually a pretty complicated, detailed conversation. There's a lot that goes into it. We have just submitted our information for our district here to the CPUC. We should be having more information back, and we'll report back to you on what that could potentially look like for San Carlos. And you should be looking for information from us somewhere around July is when we're expecting to have some more concrete numbers and information for you. Another thing that you should be on the lookout is our Emergency Operations Center joint training that we conduct in our districts throughout the state. They've been really, really well received because, as a large company, we can bring an enormous amount of resources to bear in the event of an emergency. So where some smaller water districts really struggle, if there's a large emergency and multiple main breaks, when there's an emergency within our Cal Water service area, the cavalry really is coming. And so we have been partnering with municipalities and communities that we serve to coordinate before an emergency for obvious reasons, and it's been really well received. And we've enjoyed interacting with our public safety, fire, and heads of municipal departments.
Thank you. Kind of the final note to kind of bring it home. I talked earlier about the many samples that we take. I wanted just to kind of inform you that we've been working closely with the schools under legislation with the state on lead testing. And we've completed testing with, I would say, nearly all the schools in San Carlos, and the results have been very good. So there's no actionable levels with regards to lead with the schools in San Carlos. I think that's really important to note. So with that said, we want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, and be happy to address any questions or comments that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moylan. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you, Shannon. Mr. Grocott, questions?
Yeah, just one question to follow up with Shannon on regarding the, you talked about working with fire and police and so forth. In our county, we have Office of Emergency Services. You guys work with them as well, I suppose?
We do, we do, absolutely. So when they activate their Emergency Operations Center, with many municipalities that we serve, we have somebody from California Water Service embedded in their EOC. And likewise, they are more than welcome to have someone embedded in ours, so that there's constant, real-time collaboration.
Good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, folks. Very nice presentation. A few years ago, I had a conversation with Assemblymember Kevin Mullin shortly before hometown days parade about what the state was looking for or anticipating in terms of the impact of climate change on our water supply. And I always remember at the time, he said, "Well, we're not sure. We think California will either go into a warm and dry phase," which would obviously be really bad, "or a warm and wet phase," which would be almost as bad because we'd have to spend $100 billion building reservoirs. I'm just curious about whether or not, or kind of what the current thinking is. And if you folks don't know, that's fine, but I figure you've been much closer to it than I am, and you might have some insight to it, that I'd be interested in hearing.
Yeah, sure. I don't have a lot of details on specific projects, but I do know that our company is taking those concerns very seriously. Our engineering department's been working and kind of studying with regards to climate change, potential impacts to us with regards to things that we should be planning for, alternate sources of water supply, and really making sure that we don't kind of keep kicking the can down, knowing that we just left a pretty significant drought cycle that could have continued. And that was a definite concern to all the water agencies in California. So it is not taken lightly. I can circle back with you on some more specific study information on what we're looking at as a company, if you'd like.
And that can be done offline, that's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, if you have it, I'd appreciate it. Your response actually dovetails into my second question, which is, we as a city undertook doing various things to encourage folks to conserve during the most recent drought. What, given that, I think, the accepted wisdom seems to be that they're going to be repeating, and in fact, they may be getting worse over time, or at least the severity of them. What types of things do you feel we should be doing to help our residents and businesses, you know, adapt to this evolving world where that may need to become simply part of their way of life?
Great question. I think you guys are doing a great job right now when it comes to new development, new business that's coming to the community, and reminders and some of the requirements for building code. building code standards with regards to conservation. And I think it's gone a long way. And I think you've seen that in some of the statistics that I showed in the presentation. So, I would definitely say continue that effort for sure. And I think it's great that that's in your mind, because it's in our mind every day, as well as a supplier. And really, just, and it's our role too, in working with communities, is the education side of it, is, you know, getting into the schools, getting into colleges, going to various different neighborhood, you know, workshops, et cetera, and really helping kind of understand what can you do at home? Because ultimately, it helps you save on your water bill as well, right? So, you're kind of doing two things at once, saving our precious resource and at the same time lowering costs. So, we're happy to do that. We are out there. We're trying to do even more of that. And I would say we'll definitely share those things with you. And if you want to put them on the website, et cetera, or point them our direction, we'd be happy to assist with that.
That certainly sounds interesting to me. I'll leave it up for you and Jeff to work that out. One last quick little observation. I happen to live on Chestnut Street, just a little bit downhill from one of your storage tanks. And during the drought, periodically, there'd be discharges from the tank. And of course, all my neighbors wanted to know what it was. And the presumption is that any public official knows everything having to do with anything that involves remotely public things. And of course, I had no idea what it was. I presume it was some planned activity. But I'll pass along to you that particularly during drought periods, there's a significant amount of interest in anything like that that happens. So, if there's a way that you can, maybe you already do and people just forget, if you can educate the folks who live near those, hey, if you see water running down the street, it doesn't necessarily mean there's a problem, you know?
Absolutely. And on that, please call us. Please let us know. We can do that online through a waste of water concern, or just call our office. We'll be happy to investigate.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ross, thank you. Good presentation. Just really one question. I was just going over these residential conservation programs. I didn't see anything in there about dishwashers. Are they not a big user of water, or has their efficiency not improved over the last, you know, decade and a half or two decades?
They can be water wasters, for sure. And I believe we do offer some dishwasher rebates at times. They're probably just isn't a current program and that's why it's not on the list. I'll follow up with that and respond to you and make sure, if there is, that we get that information to you.
My dishwasher is 17 years old. I have no idea if it's a water waster or not. I mean, if it is, I'd like to replace it.
Absolutely. I'll get your email from the city website and I'll respond to you.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just had one quick question. Up on Melundy, of course, you built the big tank, huge tank. But above Heather School, there's another Cal Water thing. What's going on there? Heather School?
Melundy.
Melundy? Heather School?
Yeah, the reservoir.
Could you come up and just, I'm sorry. Not that this is the most important question you're going to have, but...
Yeah, there is a, we're looking at building a new tank there.
Building a new tank, possibly.
It hasn't started yet, yeah. We're going to...
I've seen all kinds of stuff going on up there, so I'm just curious.
Right. Recently, there's been, I know they've been doing a little bit of work on the panel board up there.
Okay. I'm just curious. I didn't know what... I figured since it was right close to the other one, that if it was, boy, when that starts, you really got to work with the school, because, boy oh boy. Because I go up Melundy a billion times and it was pretty good up there on the top of, you know, Flagman and whatever else, or that was great. But when people are dropping their kids off and picking them up, I think it's a big, you're going to be on a long break for your workers.
Yes.
Because, I mean, I'm not saying you don't know that, but that's a real, very active area a couple of times a day.
I appreciate it.
So, and then when I go down the hill too. But anyway, no, that. Thanks a lot. Appreciate you guys all coming. Thanks a lot for your information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Moving on to 5B, presentation of Get Us Moving, Samhitaught County. And we're honored to have Councilmember Charles, you're not the Vice Mayor, are you, this week?
I'm a council member.
Just a regular council member. Charles Stone from Belmont. Thank you, the council member.
We change every year in Belmont.
Okay. Well, yes. Anyway, but thank you.
But only because we don't have a man of your enormous greatness amongst us.
Oh, here we go. Okay. Well, you're done now. Thank you so much.
Dropping the mic and walking away.
That's pretty much the check's in the mail. But the, anyway, Mr. Councilmember Charles Stone, thank you so much for being here and looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
All right. Are you going to be doing this? Oh, fantastic. So, first off, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me this evening and I appreciate the time. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Samhitaught County Transit District Board. But before I get into the presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't express as a Belmont City Councilmember how grateful I am for our continuing, ongoing, and excellent working relationship, exemplified most recently by our matching funding for the Alameda de los Polgus design work for the improvements. And I'm grateful that we're continuing forward on that path together. Thank you all for your leadership. So, as the Chair of the Samhitaught County Transit District, I'm here tonight to talk about Phase Two of the Get Us Moving Samhitaught County Outreach and Education Effort. Through Get Us Moving, we're reaching out to the county to learn how Samhitaught County residents think transportation funding should be spent. What we're really doing is trying to identify and prioritize the needs. And we're trying to engage with the community to inform a potential $80 million a year expenditure plan to invest in those needs. We want to make sure, though, that the plan reflects the needs of each part of our county and we want to make sure to get as much feedback as we can. Two-thirds of Samhitaught County voters would need to approve the plan. And it will only go to the voters if the SAM Trans Board and the County Board of Supervisors first approve it. So, you can see up there on the slide that we're only able to do this because of legislation passed by Assemblymember Mullen several years ago, and we're very grateful for that. So, what happened in Phase One of the Get Us Moving Samhitaught County Effort? We mailed out 140,000 surveys, asking people to rank their transit and transportation priorities. We developed the survey with the assistance of our technical advisory group, which was made up of public works officials and city managers from up and down the peninsula, as well as a stakeholder advisory group with members ranging from business groups to bicycle advocates to public safety and to those who work with senior citizens and more. We also had an additional 10,000 surveys that went out by hand and at public places. We held four town halls with 120 participants, gave 50 presentations to city councils, community and civic groups, held eight stakeholder and technical advisory group meetings, promoted the survey through TV, social media, and online, and conducted scientific polling. There's a photo of one of the coastside town halls, which were robustly attended. So, this next slide actually is a little bit interesting. We did not anticipate 14,000 responses to the survey and actually had to hire some folks to go through them, because with handwritten surveys, there was no Scantron element and we needed human beings to deal with them. So, that was actually a very good problem to have. And we have definitely heard from Samhitaught County about what their transportation priorities are. As you're going to see over the coming slides, we heard some consistent themes, with residents most concerned about highway traffic, local congestion, and somewhat surprisingly to There's a word cloud that sort of represents what we heard from comments, and it's not surprising that traffic is the biggest word there by far. So, this first survey results slide, oops. This shows the main component of the Phase One survey, which asked people to pick their top five priorities out of 12 options and to rank those top five in order of priority. And this chart shows what respondents listed as their top priority. Right off the bat, we can see that traffic on highways, traffic on local streets, and potholes come in in the top three when we look at how things were ranked number one. You can also see the transit mobility, transit travel time, and transit for commuters, which are all essentially public transit categories. Those together improve public transit is clearly one of the leading community concerns. This next slide shows how we assigned a point value to each ranking. So, the top priority got five points, second priority, four points, and so on and so on. And while the prior chart only showed how the top priorities came out, on this chart, you can see the mean score, which incorporates all of the priorities. This gives us kind of a true sense of the priorities, because it takes the full ranking into consideration, rather than just how many ranked a certain thing number one. As an example, if 20% of the respondents put technology as their number one choice, that would rate high on the last slide. But if no one else ranked it in their top five, you can see how with the mean score, it would rank much lower here. Regardless, the story is the same as we saw on the previous slide. Whether it's top score or mean score, traffic on highways and local streets, pothole repaired, and improved public transit are the key issues that we're hearing about from the community. Here we have responses by city, and we were very happy to see that San Carlos participated quite robustly. If you see there, we had 742 total responses, 581 through the mail and 161 through the web. That only slightly beat up Belmont, which had 647. And I'm really not that happy about that part, but thank you all for participating I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our most recent polling. Of course, with 14,000 responses in a survey, that's still self-selecting. So, we figured we should definitely do some scientific polling as well. And we polled last year and again this year, as I said, this is the recent one. Margin of error is plus minus around 3% and plus minus 4.3% for the split sample. The split was testing an ongoing tax versus a tax at sunsets in 30 years. There was a clear preference with voters for the 30-year sunset and that's the only thing we'll be considering going forward. Everything you see in these following slides is for that. So, as you can see here, we have some initial polling questions. We asked essentially the same question last year. And we do this to see what people first think when they hear the ballot language. What's their initial reaction? And we found that support for a half-cent sales tax for transportation funding actually increased substantially over the past year. It's up to 74% from mid-high 60s last year. And this 74% would take the ballot measure well above the two-thirds threshold needed. And for those of us that have been working hard on the outreach, this is very welcome news and makes it feel like we didn't waste our efforts. Next slide you'll see is some of the positive messaging and how that would impact support. So, some of the positive messages we tested. Every penny of the major will benefit local transportation projects and programs and cannot be taken by the state. Our local street and roads are falling apart. The major will help stop the deterioration. The major will help reduce traffic congestion on freeways and major streets like El Camino Real. The major will attract millions of dollars in state, federal, and private funding. And after hearing those positive arguments, the support went up to 78%. Of course, we also want to know how folks think when they're exposed to negative messaging. We were pretty hard on ourselves in this portion of the survey. We needed to see how this would fare even with a very strong negative messaging component. And the results still showed strong support, well within the margin of error, although they certainly dropped a little bit. So, as you can see here, we dropped to 71.6%. Negatives that we tested included, instead of asking for more taxes, the state and county need to cut waste and do a better job with taxpayer money. If government agencies manage their budgets more efficiently, we wouldn't have to pay more in taxes. Government can't deliver on the transportation projects they've already promised, why should we trust them with more money? Next up, we have our top-tier features. In the polling, we heard the same themes consistent with the survey. Traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, and transit. This suggests that the ballot question as tested in the survey is in alignment with resident priorities. And you can take a look up there at the, sort of, I'll leave that up for a second so that you can absorb the sorts of things that really resonated most strong with the residents. And I'm happy to go back over any of these when I'm done. So, here we have our four town halls, Samhitaught Library, Pacific Community Center, Menlo Park, Senior Center, and South City Council Chambers. Again, at these town halls, just as in the polling and the surveys, we heard the same consistent themes. The top three issues were traffic on highways and local streets, potholes, and transit, with some minor variations geographically in how those top three came in. There we go. Caught up. In Menlo Park, for instance, Dumbarton was a huge issue. You didn't hear as much about that in South City. But we also heard a lot more about the need for east-west connectivity through transit or bike paths within Menlo Park. Out on the coast, besides potholes, we heard bus, 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 bus. Residents wanted more service. Up north, there was an emphasis on smart transit and best practices. Mid-county wanted us to think big. Big highway and infrastructure projects, big transit changes. We held these obviously on the coast, in the middle of the county, and the south and north, trying to make it as easy as possible for folks to come. We're also going to be holding four additional town halls, some of which have already taken place actually, during Phase Two. A little bit about our stakeholder and technical advisory groups, which we're very grateful for. Each city was invited to participate in the technical advisory group. Dozens of community groups, organizations in the private sector were active in the stakeholder advisory group. This helped to get people to take the survey in droves. And the SAG and the TAG really was helpful with drafting outlines of early expenditure plan categories, allocations, et cetera. And with that, we are launching Phase Two, the Transportation Budget Challenge. So, those folks who now want to visit GetUsMovingSMC.com again will have the opportunity to take a brand-new survey we've prepared. And this survey is a budget challenge tool. We're asking residents to weigh priorities against each other, not just to give us priorities this time. If a major goes on the ballot and it's approved, it will provide about $2.4 billion, all told, over 30 years. We want to see how folks would allocate that. So, if you visit GetUsMovingSMC.com, within some ranges, you can come up with your own budget, which will help us further fine-tune what we might do with an expenditure plan. And what we have here is a poor word representation of what the budget tool looks like online. It's much neater online and I wish we had better graphics for this. But this shows you some of the ranges that we're talking about. So, in other words, for public transit, you can go low investment at 40%, moderate investment at 50% of the money, or a significant increase in investment at 60% of the money. Of course, you can't have it always. If you use up 60% on public transit, you've only got 40% left to allocate throughout the other categories. If you use up 20% on the Dumbarton quarter and 60% on public transit, now you've only got 20% to allocate. And if you look at how the numbers add up, that means you probably can't have something from every category. We've already begun to get very good response to this, but we would very much appreciate it if you could each work your personal networks and perhaps put this up on the city webpage so that we can get as robust participation as possible. Here we have our town hall meetings, one of which has already passed, which was the North County. Our Central County, which includes this area, is Thursday, May 17, at 6:30 PM. That's this Thursday at the Lane Room in Burlingame, at the Burlingame Library. We would really love folks to come out. So, if you can at all get there, we would appreciate it. And we would appreciate you helping us get the word out about both that and the remaining two, coastside and South County, town halls as well. And so, that's the end of the presentation. Our ask is simple. At this point in the game, we really want to continue getting robust feedback. So, please, share this on your Facebook pages, tweet it out, put it on your Instagram, talk to your friends and neighbors about it, if you don't have those, or even if you do, and help us continue to hear back from the community on how they would like to see this money spent if we decide to put it on the ballot. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate the information. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Charles. Very good and informative presentation. Obviously, a lot of work went into it. Glad to see people taking the time to do it right. One of the things, I happen to be our representative on CCG. And one of the things that's moving forward through, I guess I'll call it the CCG channels, is the idea of a project to add an additional lane onto 101, north and southbound, throughout the heart of Samhitaught County. I don't remember quite how far north they're planning on taking it. I don't remember quite how far north they're planning on taking it.
It only goes to 380.
That's what I thought. The information I've seen about the impact that that will have on metrics having to do with traffic is it'll clearly have an effect. It's not clear that it actually has a terribly significant effect for the amount of money that it costs, which is estimated to be something on the order of half a billion dollars and climbing. So my question, with all that as preamble, my question is, are the projects that this money is going to be used for already basically determined? Or is, if it's put before voters and it's approved, there will be a sort of a granting process that projects will have to go through and prove their metal before they actually get access to the money?
That's a great question. So first off, managed lanes, as they're referred to, and we internally have agreed that managed lanes is actually a terrible descriptor, and it shouldn't have been used. Toll lanes isn't really the right descriptor either. Transit lanes is the right descriptor because without them, we don't get our express buses that we want to start running from San Francisco. We believe that there's tremendous meat on the bone in terms of unmet demand for riders who, if they worked for a bigger company like Google, would be on what's known as a Google bus. But if they worked for a smaller company, maybe one that has 150 to 200, maybe the next Google, they're probably not getting that benefit. However, if we were to provide it, they would get on. And we've also heard from the big type of companies that they would prefer not to have to be in this business. They would prefer it if we could do it, and they've even implied that they might be willing to help. So that's the first thing I'd say about that. To answer the question, or the other thing I would say about that is managed lanes, as they are unfortunately known, is completely funded without $1 from this major. I confirmed that today. Because of the SB 1 money that's going to flow to this area and some help from the private sector and some other sources, we're probably going to need some money from this major to run the express buses, but it doesn't look like any of this money is going to be needed for that. And so that helps allay some people's concerns. That's part of your question. The other part of your question is, how is this going to be chopped up, and how do people get at it? So that's what this phase is about. I will tell you that the transit portion of the money is going to flow to SAMTrans, the Samhail County Transit District. What would we do with that? We have a number of things we would like to do with it. There's a lot of innovative stuff, like the express buses, like better east-to-west service, that we simply can't consider because of financing constraints. We would probably also use a portion of it to help make sure that Caltrain was properly funded, Samhail County's portion of Caltrain was properly funded. Caltrain has no dedicated standalone revenue source, and it is a constant game of the lowest common denominator controlling how much funding it gets. I'm on the Caltrain board as well, and we're trying to break that as a paradigm. We keep getting caught into one of the partner agencies saying, "We can't meet the full funding. This is how much we can give," and then the other two say, "Well, if you're not going to give the full amount, neither will we," and we end up with a deficit that we really can't afford to have, and rolling stock not getting maintained the way it should. We're actually working on something right now where we're going to take an IOU maybe from VTA. It's the first time we've tried something like this, but we believe it's more important to get all the money and believe that they're going to reimburse it. But having that as a dedicated source would help us not have to lean on the county in lean times or anything else, and it would ensure that we could actually do that until such time as Caltrain gets, hopefully, a tri-county major going so that it can have a stable standalone revenue source. There are going to be buckets where people will be able to apply for it. I brought this slide up that I didn't bring up. There we go. So the repair potholes, reduce local congestion bucket of money, that's going to be available for cities to apply for. So that would be the sort of grant process, and it would likely be administered through the TA, not SAMTrans. The rest of the money would likely flow through SAMTrans. BikePed might flow through TA as well, but there's definitely going to be significant money in this. I mean, we're talking about $2.4 billion. So at the low end on the repair potholes, reduce local congestion, that's $240 million for local government to apply for discretionary projects. And at the high end, that's $480 million. That's a significant chunk of money available out of this for those types of project. That was far too long an answer, but did it answer your question?
It worked for me. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Charles, thank you very much, not only for the presentation, but for all the hard work, and I know how much hard work you're putting into this, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Have a good one. Third item on our agenda is under Presentations, Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing Public Works Week. So I have the proclamation. So Stephen, are you going to accept this?
Yes.
Four weeks, okay. Well, this is good to start. We're going to, we have a proclamation here recognizing National Public Works Week. I'm not going to read all the "whereas's," but this is the kind of work that gets done that no one sees. Well, I shouldn't say it that way. They see it, but they don't realize what's going on that's improving our facilities underground for the most part, and helping our drains, our sewers, and then, of course, the buildings, streets, even expands into solid waste collection. And it's so important that, I mean, again, especially in the peninsula where a lot of the underground and a lot of the improvement, or the infrastructure was done 40, 50, 60 years ago, and if we don't keep it up, we're going to be in a real pickle, so to speak. We heard from Cal Water earlier. We heard from Charles about the Keep It Moving, and all of this ties in with the week of May 20 to 26 of 2018 that we designate for the city of San Carlos, give a proclamation as National Public Works Week, and to emphasize the substantial contributions that the professionals of public works make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in this city of good living. So thank you, Stephen, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. On behalf of the Department, Department of Works Department and all the engineers within our San Carlos community, certainly I'd like to accept your proclamation, and certainly we appreciate the mayor and city council members adopting this proclamation. And so thank you very much. We look very forward to working, you know, moving the projects along and completing everything that you have asked us to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen, very much. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so now. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the posted agenda? All right, seeing none, move on to Item 7, which is a consent calendar, which is usually voted on in one motion. And is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, thank you. The next item is Item 8A, Report to Council from a City Attorney who attended the City Attorney League of California Cities Conference and had some information for us about what's going on in the rest of the world, and should we say, the rest of California, relative to legal items. So Mr. Rubens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. As you know, the League of California Cities sponsors a city attorney conference in the spring each year, and it was my pleasure to attend this year's conference. It's every year, it seems that the, I learn a lot about what's going on in the rest of the state, and it's an opportunity for me to meet with other city attorneys like myself to collaborate on problems that we all seem to have in common and others that are sometimes unique, and we each give each other advice on how to approach them. So as part of the conference, there's a great deal of material that is submitted, and so my intention tonight is not to take too much time because there's a lot of material. It was a three-day conference, but I've got some highlights that I just want to go over for a few minutes for you. So a lot of times we hear design immunity comes up. It's come up in the past few years regarding a couple of different items, and there was a case that kind of clarified what the discretionary approval element of design immunity is, or how that impacts a city's ability to obtain design immunity for a public improvement. So it was a case, Rodriguez versus Department of Transportation. It's a new case that was just decided in 2018. A plaintiff was a passenger in a pickup truck on a state highway. The truck veered onto the shoulder and off to the right, then struck the end of a guardrail, went over an irrigation ditch, and the plaintiff, a passenger died, and the plaintiff and the driver were injured. The plaintiff in the case came up with a theory that the absence of a rumble strip on the edge of the road was contributed to the accident, and the court disagreed, saying that the purpose of design immunity is to provide immunity for public agencies, and the failure to consider a rumble strip was not relevant to discretionary approval of the project. So when they, in other words, when they repaved the roadway the last time, the state was able to get design immunity because they had a design that was reasonable, and the law does not require them to review every possible design and every possible mitigation that might be able to be incorporated in such a design. Another case that was of interest that was decided last summer, and it was mentioned before here at the city council, it's the Tetchera versus County of Alameda case involving a plaintiff in that case sued the county for its denial of a gun store at a location in the unincorporated part of the county. The case was brought on Second Amendment grounds, and the Court of Appeal, Anbock, which was the entire Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, found a 9 to 2 vote that buyers have no right to a gun store at a particular location so long as access to firearms is not meaningfully constrained. And the plaintiffs themselves, who were the gun store operators in that case, did not have an independent Second Amendment right to sell guns. So it's a fairly powerful zoning case. It's something that we're studying as part of a review of the moratorium. Supreme Court has not yet decided whether to take up that case, but it'd be interesting to see if they do decide to take it up. Another case that worked its way through the courts, decided in March of this year, was about pensions. So pensions became a big issue in 2012 when the governor signed the Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013, otherwise known as PEPRA. And they, that law changed the way benefits were calculated for certain compensation that employees had been earning. And the court in that case decided that you don't necessarily have a right to all the, to have a pension that continues exactly as it was when you were hired or changed during your employment, but you can't impair a vested right of a public employee unless there's compelling evidence that the impairment bears a material relation to the successful operation of the pension system. Rising pension costs alone were not generally sufficient to impair a benefit. So it's kind of a case that indicates that it's possible to change retirement benefits, but you have to have really good reasons. So it's still difficult to change vested rights in the retirement system in California. Another interesting case, just because it's a local case, involved a referendum that was filed against the city of San Bruno, arising out of a hotel that they were building on El Camino at a former Navy facility site. So the city purchased the land for $1.4 million in 2012, and then selected a developer through a request for proposal process and passed a resolution, but in 2016, they passed a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement to the hotel developer. Well, the residents or interested parties sued the city, excuse me, filed for a referendum, and then the city declined to put the referendum on the ballot because they said it was not a referendable item. And there's, the theory that the city employed was that it wasn't a legislative act, they were just implementing prior actions, and therefore the referendum, if you were going to do a referendum, you had to do it at an earlier stage in the process. Court appeals agreed that the council's sale of the property was simply implementing prior decisions that the council had already made. So there are limitations on the ability to do a referendum on projects that essentially have been approved, and then later on, when you're just simply trying to implement your project, it's not subject to attack, even though in an isolated sense, a contract might be considered a legislative act in certain circumstances. Another local agency got, was sued by a telecom company, city of Burlingame was sued by a telecom company for different antennas that were proposed in the city. The reason I think this case is interesting is because it's something we see from time to time in San Carlos, and federal law really constrains a city's ability to reject antennas that are in the public right-of-way except on aesthetic grounds. So fortunately for Burlingame, there was plenty of information in the record that they were rejecting it on aesthetic grounds because, of course, the plaintiff in the case was pointing to the public testimony that was not aesthetic grounds. So there was enough evidence in the record that supported Burlingame's position, and so they prevailed. It did not act as a total ban on the applicant. They could reapply with another application with a more aesthetically pleasing proposal. So on a couple, I'm going to try and wrap it up here in two minutes. So there's going to be a, the governor's office of planning and research is going to look at the SEQA guidelines to kind of address the housing shortage in the state, and so to have revised exemptions from the SEQA process for residential and mixed-use developments near transit and redevelopment of vacant or abandoned buildings, energy efficiency and other things. So I think it'll be interesting to see what they come up with and how that affects our ability and the process that we employ to review projects, especially ones near transit villages, near the transit center, excuse me. Then there's an interesting matter that came up, involves a potential initiative on the ballot this fall that's going to significantly, if passed, if it even makes the ballot, it's not clear if it's made the ballot yet, significantly change the way local agencies can enact general and special taxes. Basically, what it'll propose to do is to require that in each tax measure, the city council would have to approve placing the measure on the ballot by a 2/3 vote, and then the public would have to approve by a 2/3 vote. Whereas right now, a special tax requires a majority vote of the council to put it on the ballot and 2/3 vote of the public to approve, and a general tax requires a 2/3 vote of the city council and a majority vote to approve. So this proposition would change that to make it 2/3 across the board. It would also try, attempt to require 2/3 vote of the city council to adopt or increase any certain fees that are, it's unclear how they're going to define that, but it's going to be more restrictive on fees. And it also removes the exception for fees for franchises, which is interesting, too. So requiring a vote for that would be different than what we've seen in the past. And so that's my brief summary of what happened at the League of Cities, and I'd be glad, as usual, to talk with any council members about any matters that piqued their interest with that report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rubens. Question, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Greg. Quick question, Greg, but if the answer is lengthy, we can talk about it offline. That item you talked about relating to the court ruling that was talking about ways, my recollection, ways in which pensions could be redefined, did they, in the ruling, give any guidance as to what kinds of things would meet the threshold, or are they doing the typical court thing of saying, "Well, that doesn't do it, and we're not telling you it might"?
Yeah, I think my recollection of the case is that they said you have to have compelling evidence, but they didn't specify exactly what they would think would be compelling. I think they're waiting for the case that shows that.
Okay. Maybe we can talk about that further offline.
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
I'd just be curious. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Rubens, again, thank you very much for the information. And a couple of these things are not quite there, but are going to be very important, it sounds like, in the future, about how perhaps taxes are collected and how they're voted on. Okay, we'll move on to item nine, a public hearing. Item nine A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing index-linked adjustments to the cost of services scheduled, user fees, and park facility development and sewer capacity charge impact fees for fiscal year 2018 and 19. Ms. Mendenhall.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of adjustments to our user fee schedule, park facility development fee, and sewer capacity charges. Every spring, in conjunction with the budget process, staff reviews the cost of providing services based on fees. Last year, the city completed a comprehensive user fee study with our outside consultants, NBS. The study included a full analysis of the total cost of providing services, including all applicable direct, indirect, and overhead costs associated with each type of service. Such a study is only performed about three to five years. As such, there's very only, there's only very minor changes this year. When council adopted the user fee schedule last year, they chose to use the Bay Area Urban Wage earners and Clerical Workers Consumer Price Index as a guideline for future annual increases. Therefore, it's recommended to increase the user fee schedule by 3.8% or the CPI as of February 2018. In addition, there are two impact fees recommended to be increased. Per municipal code section 3.34.04, the park facility development fee should be increased annually by the percentage increase of park construction costs cited in the engineering news record for the Bay Area. As such, that total increase would be 4%. And per municipal code section 13.04.025, the sewer capacity charge should be increased annually based on the chart, or the change in the engineering news record construction index over a 20-city average. As such, this increase would be 6.9%. Finally, there have been some requests by some nonprofit agencies that certain fees be waived, in particular, those fees for the A-frame signs. The resolution before you assigns the authority to waive these fees to the city manager. So in conclusion, if adopted, these user fees and impact fees would result in a net revenue increase of approximately $209,000, based on estimated activity, of which $153,000 would be general fund revenue. These revenues have already been included in the budget document, based on last year's council direction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Rebecca. First question, just out of curiosity. So the sewer capacity charges, up by 6.9%, that's because construction costs are going up so rapidly in the Bay Area?
Yes.
Due to all the activity going on? Interesting. This next question, I'm not sure whether Rebecca, it's for you or for Jeff, but just for the benefit of anybody listening to us, can you enlarge a little bit upon what authority is being proposed to be delegated to the city manager for the nonprofit organizations? It sounds like it's more than just for the A-frame signs, so maybe it is just for A-frame signs.
The request is that if certain fees could be waived, it's based on hardship or such, and maybe Greg Rubens can chime in a little bit, too, or Jeff?
I'd just like to get a little bit, you know, for the benefit of everybody watching us and listening to us, a little bit more color on what it is that we're authorizing Jeff to do.
These would be minor fees primarily paid for events or A-frame advertising signage that the city charges. As the council knows, often the requests come to you all to waive fees for local nonprofits, many, like Friends of the Library and things that we actually donate money in support to, and then we turn around and charge them a fee to market their event. In those instances, it, in the past, has made perfect sense to me to waive those fees. However, the municipal code doesn't allow for me to do that, so we've had to charge those fees anyway. I've even asked the city attorney on occasion if I could pay the fee for them, to which the answer is no.
So just one, thank you, that's helpful. One brief follow-up. So let's say a not-for-profit was operating a facility someplace in town, and they needed to do some demolition and work, and they needed to apply for that kind of permit. Would this extend to where you could waive those fees as well?
I don't believe so. I don't believe we're talking about permit-type fees. These would just be user fees, correct, Rebecca?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca, on that slide that you mentioned, the summary of recommended charges, you said full city fees for services increased by 3% for the CPI. I'm not sure I followed that.
So the CPI increase this year, at the time, we normally look at February to see what the CPI increase, and use that as a benchmark, or as the rate that we use, and that's what it was at the time. This year, February was 3.8%. So we're just increasing all the fees from last year by CPI.
Okay. I guess it was the word "for" that caught me up there. I didn't know if that was supposed to be "or," or "as per the CPI."
As per the CPI. That would have been better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
Couple of questions. So the one that Ron was just asking about, what that's saying, then, is all the fees that people pay when they come into the city for whatever, that's what that impacts?
Yes.
So?
Development fees, certain administrative fees, yes.
So from Planning Department, Building Department, upstairs, anything anybody does?
Except for those fees that are set by statute. So like a return check fee, you can't change that price, that's set by statute.
And then sewer capacity charges, those are, explain how those are coming into play.
So the sewer capacity charges, that's not part of our user fee schedule, that's one of our impact fees. And per the municipal code, we should be increasing that annually, and so that's what we're doing here. We're just including it.
Does it get paid? How is one impacted by that?
So that's for new construction. So it is imposed on all development and redevelopment to recover the costs for the city sewer system and the new connections to that system. So it's calculated by Public Works, and then collected by Public Works.
Other questions? Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
A second. All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I'm going to vote no on this, and it's not really on the dais.
We're just going to close the public hearing first. Can we?
Oh, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Okay, fine. Roll call on the public hearing.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Sure, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Grokot.
Oh, well, no one's made the motion on the thing, so.
All right. Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2018 dash?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, authorizing index-linked adjustments to the cost of services scheduled, user fees, and park facility development and sewer capacity charge impact fees for fiscal year 2018-19.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any further discussion? Mr. Grokot?
No. So the thing that I'm troubled by is just the assumption that the CPI should impact these fees, and it's not really given tonight any real segue for that, you know, the reasoning behind it. I suppose that's actually a policy that's set separate from this action tonight, so it would have to be something that would be put on the dais for discussing how and why we would raise fees across the board like that. So, and I'm, personally, I'm not comfortable with it, so.
All right. Your comments are recorded in the record.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sure.
Just a follow-up to Matt's question for Jeff. I thought the CPI increase was something that we, or perhaps for Rebecca, we decided upon after, last year, after we did the in-depth review, which was more of a cost-based analysis. Is that correct?
Yes, it was. Resolution 2017-50 stated that future increases would be based on CPI.
Right. And when, can you remind me when the next time, if any, that we would actually look through at the actual cost-based analysis?
Since we just did it last year, it would probably be two to three years from now.
Okay. So there's sort of, periodically, there's a true-up, if you will, to whatever the actual analysis shows the cost actually rose by.
Yes.
It's just as a convenience thing, and not to burn up staff time every year doing this for the interim years.
That was correct. That was part of the discussion that we had last year, where we pointed out that, you know, there's a significant public cost, not only in terms of staff time, but also in actual dollars, to hire consultants to do the study, and it's not something that would be very efficient to do every year. And the council recognized that they also wanted to keep pace with their fees relative to costs, so that they didn't see, you know, really large increases, you know, four years from now, because you didn't change the fees at all for four years, and then you were faced with a 15% increase when you got to it, that that wasn't a position that you felt was comfortable for the city to be in, or for our customers and clients to be in either, so.
Thanks to both of you for the reminder of that.
It's not a perfect metric to Matt's point, but it's, you know, the best one we have.
Yeah, and I certainly understand where, I think, where Matt's coming from on it, but after you reminded me about the process we went through, I remember the discussion, and I'm certainly okay with the fact that we do true it up occasionally, every few years, and it's a matter of how much money we choose to invest in figuring out what fees to charge people, and, as you pointed out, the shock factor of, we only do it every few years.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes, all right, moving on. Public hearing nine B, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Section 2.24.155, Section 18.26.040, relating to the Residential Design Review Committee, and adopt a resolution establishing the Residential Design Review Committee composition. And Mr. Grokot will be leaving us for this discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Grokot, and I had a brief discussion before the meeting, and there was a concern that, given his business, that there might be some foreseeable effect of reforming the RDRC that could impact his business, so in abundance of caution, he's recusing himself from this item.
All right. So, Mr. Savay, how are you?
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Good evening. First of all, this is to introduce an ordinance to change where it is in terms of our, the legality of it, and change it, removing it from the municipal code, and recommending that it be replaced with a resolution establishing a new RDRC. And the intent of this is, it's more expeditious and adds more flexibility for the council and the city to make changes more quickly, if necessary, for this type of makeup of this group. Moving on, in terms of the RDRC, just a little bit of background, the RDRC was created in 2007, and it replaced a group called the Exception Design Control Committee. And the RDRC reviews large additions and new single-family residences in our community, and they have public meetings. And the current makeup is one planning commissioner that is appointed by the commission, one architect or design professional appointed by the city council, and one citizen volunteer, which is also council-appointed. And one of the issues that we've been having, and one of the key reasons that this is being recommended, is we've had some vacancies and some absences that have been a real problem for the RDRC, and we've had to cancel a number of meetings this last year. And what happens is that puts the project off for the applicant, so the applicant has issues, and also has a snowball effect for the projects. If you have another couple of projects at the next meeting, then you have this other, these other one or two projects that roll over, and it, again, it has created somewhat of a real challenge for us. And also, there's some other suggestions. So if we're looking at changing the makeup, and we have looked at trying to get people interested in doing this, we went out for, normally like we would for other commissions and committees in the city, we didn't get responses the first time we went out, and we kept going out. We even reached out to local architects and designers directly, and tried to get them interested in getting on the RDRC to no avail. What the current recommendation is, and this is a planning commission recommendation, is to recommend to you that we do change the makeup a little bit of the RDRC. The recommended makeup is to have a commission, a commissioner, and again, they're appointed by the commission, so that's about the same situation. The new makeup would be an architect or licensed design professional under contract with the city, a community volunteer with some design experience appointed by the council, and an alternate architect or licensed design professional under contract with the city in the event that the community member isn't available. So what we're looking for is more certainty in terms of getting people a quorum, getting the meetings done. But also, the other idea is to have a licensed architect or design professional across from the applicant's architect or design professional. And, you know, over the years, design can be somewhat subjective, even though we do have codes and guidelines. When you have a professional architect, and then, let's say, you did have grouping of people who weren't necessary, they might have some design experience, but they're not sitting across from, you know, a professional architect that's been hired by the applicant. So the intent is for fairness and parity, when, some parity with the RDRC and the applicants. And this is SEQA exempt, so it's not a project, so it's SEQA exempt. And in terms of the formal motion, this is your formal motion, again, to introduce this resolution and adopt the resolution for this new design review committee, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Savay. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Al. Succinct and on-topic as, and focused as always. Couple of questions. What, since the rate-limiting factor here seems to be finding community volunteers with the appropriate level of design experience, what would be the consequences of not, of basically expanding that pool, weakening the, or relaxing the requirements, so that you did not have to have design experience necessarily to be on the RDRC?
And that's the way it is now. There is one person, one citizen volunteer, that doesn't have to have that experience, and that's, that's okay. The issue there is...
Sorry to interrupt, so?
Yeah, sure.
So, but what if we made it so that none of the citizen volunteers had to have design experience?
Okay.
That's what it is now.
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought...
That's what it is now.
One of the people, let's go back, one of them has to have design experience, one of the council appointees does in the current, that's the current makeup. So it's one planning commissioner, one architect or design professional, and then one citizen that doesn't have to have.
Correct.
But one of them has to have some kind of design.
Right, but right now, the citizen does not have to have any design experience.
That's correct.
Correct.
So if they all didn't, is the question, right?
Correct, that's what I'm asking, correct.
If they all didn't, I guess the issue would be a couple of things. Fairness to the applicant. I mean, there's fairness on both sides, right? The city, why have a RDRC in the first place? I mean, the intent is, one, to give a forum to the community to air their concerns with regard to a house or an addition in the neighborhood, how it fits in. And then, the intent is, and the charges is also, can changes be made? Let's say a concern, hey, you're, this second story is looking down into my bathroom, or my... Let's say a concern, hey, this second story is looking down into my bathroom or my, you know, room, you know, I don't like that, I don't like that giant window there. So what kind of ideas can be brought or talked about or negotiated to improve that situation? So if you have a design professional versus a non-design professional, the design professional might have a lexicon of ideas or experience to bring to the table to solve that particular issue.
I guess, let me follow up on that. I guess the thing that's confusing me a little bit there, maybe I, you know, my experience with RDRC is just my own project and one or two others that I sat in to learn about the process before I submitted mine. You know, like on my project, we moved and replaced a couple of windows, and we did, my wife and I are not design professionals, we did it because we heard the feedback and went, okay, that makes sense, right? So I guess I'm having difficulty understanding, at least perhaps in that example, why the level of professionalism or experience is a necessity for getting appropriate changes made. And again, I'm just asking this not because I don't want to have expertise on the commission, it's just that if we're having a problem getting the expertise, do we really need it?
Well, can you reflect on that a little bit more? So you're saying, why have any expertise on the, the question is, why have any professional expertise on the Design Review Committee?
Yeah, let me try it this way, see if I can explain my point. It seems from your description of what do you want the professional expertise for on the commission, it's really to have almost like kind of a knowledgeable judge, okay? It's somebody acting in a, it's to have people acting in sort of a quasi-judicial capacity, listening to neighbors and applicants, you know, sparring about how they, one wants to design one way, and other people are saying, well, that's not, that's not consistent with the neighborhood or what I'd like to see. And it's not clear to me that how much expertise in the subject matter you actually need to be able to do that. I mean, for example, we act in quasi-judicial capacity all the time, and none of us are experts in the matters that we act in that way. We get information from staff, Greg reminds us of how we have to be careful of what we're doing, and then we make our learned judgments. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So it could be that there is a, and sometimes it's a lot more significant than just a window, could be a whole second floor, or a wing that can move. Let's say it needs to move farther away, or it has to be a different shape, or the shape is even incorrect from an architectural standpoint, that happens. And if you have design experience, you can see those ideas by looking at a design, whereas if I don't have much, I might not see that. Now, the architect on the other side of the table knows what can and can't happen to make it a better design, or improve something for the neighbor, or correct something that's incorrect from a design standpoint. So the architect that's been hired knows what can be done. If you just don't have the knowledge base, you wouldn't know to ask that architect to make that change.
You know, actually, this discussion is very helpful, and I appreciate you clarifying it. I did have one other, hopefully, quick question. Let me just say that I hear what you're saying. I guess perhaps what it is in part is, if I imagined myself as the citizen volunteer on the RDRC, whether I knew what was possible or not, and almost regardless of what the expert architect told me, if I was hearing enough stuff that on a common sense basis I said, find another answer, I would have no problem looking the architect in the eye after he or she told me that can't be done, and I'd say, I don't believe you, go find an answer, okay? And that's where I don't, it's less a matter of dueling expertise than it is almost just saying, go earn your expertise and come back with an answer that makes everybody happy. And I don't need to be an expert in architecture to tell you to do that. The quicker question I have, hopefully quicker, is, given that we're having difficulty attracting the kind of people we want, do we have the statutory authority, and have we looked into offering, I guess, some kind of stipend to, I don't know if they're technically a volunteer anymore if we give them a stipend, but, you know, basically incentivizing somebody with money?
Yeah, city staff has not done that, but that's certainly within, I believe it's within your purview to do that.
Greg, is that, we can do that, or?
Yeah, I mean, the resolution setting forth the qualifications of the commissioners, I think Item 2 talks about a licensed design professional under contract by the city to act as a member, so I think the idea is to attract someone with additional expertise in that status, and then the resident has, is just to have some experience. So is that correct, Al?
Yeah. Says, yeah, community volunteer with professional design experience.
In other words, that's actually part of the proposal to begin with. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Al, thank you again for taking the time with me this morning to kind of go over this thing. What I want to do for a moment is I want to go back to pretty much the reason we're talking about this. From the staff report, it says, you know, the problems have largely been in attendance, canceled meetings, and they've had to reschedule, and that sort of backs up the whole process. But lately, through some of the community meetings we've had, which I have not attended, but I've heard some feedback about them, the RDRC itself has come under criticism, and apparently not for that, or maybe that's one of the criticisms. What are some of the other criticisms that you've heard that may be part of this proposal? Or that might be solved by this reorganization?
Well, I think that, you know, that the RDRC may not be making changes that could potentially be made, or that they are, their hands are tied, that they don't have the tools that they need to, that they need to make changes, or that they're a rubber stamp. That's what we heard at the community meeting, somebody said that at the last community meeting. So those are some of the things that we've heard. And I think that the RDRC does have flexibility, and has to some extent, but I think, again, some of these changes would enact a greater span of possibility and creativity in solving some of the problems that we're hearing about.
Well, then, do you think that the current makeup has, you know, the way it is now has contributed to some of that accusation of rubber stamp mentality? I don't know if it's fair not to say that, but, you know, it is what it is, and we've had these criticisms. So, I mean, does one indicate another?
I think that what happens, just in terms of processes, is they, the RDRC does get a recommendation from the city planning staff. So that going in, and a lot of times what happens is we, the city planning staff tries to work with the applicant, and gets to a point where the design looks good and it conforms to the zoning code. But that's, sometimes that's not good enough from a design standpoint. And, agree or disagree, you can still improve on a design even though it conforms to the zoning code. And so I think having a level of expertise on the committee, whether it be volunteers or professionals or commissioners, whatever it is, you've got to have somebody on that side of the table that understands that even though it conforms to the zoning code, you can improve on a design if there's an issue that comes up at the hearing, at the meeting. And that may be part of the issue that we're hearing, is maybe the RDRC felt like they didn't have that span of control, or something else.
I think in most instances, council member, the folks that go away from the RDRC feeling primarily frustrated, their frustration really is with the zoning code as opposed to the RDRC. They didn't go there because necessarily they wanted a window moved on the second floor, they went there because they wanted the RDRC to say, no second floor. And that's not within the RDRC's charter, so it...
It didn't matter what they said, they had a different issue that they were...
That tends to be where people, you know, because we've got a lot of people on both sides that go through the RDRC process who come away, you know, feeling heard and like a project had been approved. But there are lots of instances where they, you know, there are large changes, like, don't do the project this way, build your house in a totally different one-story way, and that's not something the RDRC has the ability to do.
And I'd like to add, you know, I have seen where the RDRC has made significant changes to a design for the better, and it depends on the makeup of the group. So when we've had design professionals and others with experience in a full contingent of people, I've seen them make really good decisions and say, no, that doesn't work. Even though you conform to the zoning, that design for this neighborhood doesn't work at all. Go back to the drawing board, and the architect goes, okay, I'm not going to get approval by the RDRC, I'm going to go back and redesign. And I've seen significantly improved designs as a result of the RDRC, sending them back to the drawing board.
So the other question I have was, I know that the staff recommended one contract architect and one planning commissioner, and one, and a community development director or a designee. I have to say, the reason that I like that is that, and I realize that it does eliminate the community member, the community volunteer, but I think we all need to be reminded that planning commissioners are already community volunteers. So a community volunteer in addition to a planning commissioner, to me, it just seems rather redundant. So I'm just wondering, and I don't know if it's a fair question, but if you were in charge of everything, would that be your preferred, or would you go with what the planning commission preferred? I guess maybe a better question is, which would be, in your mind, which would better serve the applicants and the community?
Well, I, we did recommend that the director or designee, and what my idea was there is either myself or a senior member of the staff, and it would be at the principal planner level or senior planner level, someone with a lot of design experience, but that also understood the zoning code very well. So you have those, the combination of expertise and experience, and certainty that you're going to get somebody on the, you know, at the meeting, because we have a couple of different people, so there's redundancy built in. So that was the intent of that, and so that's why we suggested that at that time. The commission said, well, there's too much redundancy on staff, you've already, your staff person has already reviewed it, why bring staff in again? It would be a different person than the review person, but they felt that it was too redundant. If you were asked me, I mean, that was our initial proposal, that's what I thought would be best, but I'm okay with this too, and I think that city planning staff is okay with this lineup as well. So that was the preferred, but this works.
Okay, and there's going to be a staff member there anyway, no matter what, is what's decided?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, under the recommendation, planning commissioner appointed by the commission, okay? Which I did, I sat on the ERP QR, whatever it was before, and I don't think I got under the new acronym. Architect licensed under contract to the city, okay, got it? The third one, you've just mentioned that we've had difficulty getting a community member.
Yeah, we have, yes.
Okay, so what prompts the, do you know what went into the decision, the commission, to sort of throw it out again? To me, this looks like a guaranteed, we're going to have all kinds of trouble getting somebody, so it's pretty much going to be two architects under contract. I'm just asking, I'm just, it appears to me that's what's going to happen. If we have it, I mean, may not, but maybe we go out again and someone shows up, but we haven't had, we've had difficulty apparently getting that person. So in effect, we're going to have possibly two architects who are licensed to develop under contract and one planning commissioner, which is not necessarily a problem, I just, from a practical matter, that's what appears to me that's going to happen unless we can find somebody that wants to volunteer. The other point is, when you talked about quorum, of these three people, is a quorum two of the three?
Yes.
Okay, any two?
Yes.
Okay, so, like I said, I mean, I'm just, from a practical standpoint, I think we're going to have a second architect there a lot of the time, but again, that, hopefully that if we have a community volunteer, they'll be able to let people know about it ahead of time. Mr. Obert?
Yeah, thank you, Bob, and thank you actually for going down that line, because I hadn't thought about that. I just wanted to make the observation, it suddenly occurred to me. If we end up in a situation where we have two hired architects on this and the planning commission member, if we think we're getting complaints now from people about the RDRC is not responsive to community concerns, we're going to get even more, okay? So, I mean, that's, I'm presaging what I'm going to do, I'm going to end up voting against this, not because I don't want to see it improved, the situation improved, because I do, I want to get rid of the backlog of stuff, but I really hope that whatever we do, we really, perhaps do some training with our commissioners to remind them, they are empowered, even if they are not experts, to force the experts to do what they think makes sense, okay? And we don't need experts to battle experts, we just need people to say, do a better, you know, do a different job.
Well, I agree with some of what you said, and I'm always concerned about too many experts being on any commission, because they're going to, it's like, well, anyway, they're going to try to design their own house instead of what the other one is. However, I'm willing to give the planning commission and the planning staff a little rope, as they say, to try this, and if it works, great, and if it doesn't, like you said, we'll hear about it in spades. So, any other questions of Mr. Seve?
Just to clarify one point, keep in mind that we're changing the structure of the appointment, the way RDRC members are appointed. So it used to be set by ordinance, but now we've, we're changing it to, that you're setting it by resolution, so it's much easier to change the composition if you identify some issue with that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, hopefully it'll be easier if we want to do it. Any other questions, Mr. Collins? No, we turned it off, oh, too bad.
Yeah, Greg answered my question.
Great. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, come on up, honey. You've got two minutes. Welcome.
I spoke at the planning commission urging them to get the professional, because I see too often that, through the years, that, you know, if somebody doesn't, can't even read plans, it's very hard, it takes a while for them to get trained, and it takes about six months to nine months to get them so they know what they're doing. And it's so much easier if somebody has design experience. They don't have to be an architect, but they could be, for years Donna was an interior decorator, but she had a design sense, and she could read plans, and it does help. And it's always been my concern, I can remember going years ago to volunteer to be on the planning commission, and one of the council members says, well, you don't have to be an architect, and really emphasized it for the planning commission, and I think that's a big mistake. I think you should have architects. Sir, you're saying that's redundant, but one architect on this side of the table, it's nice to have somebody there to counter in case there's a detail that needs to be corrected and that the layman doesn't see. And I really, you know, I see your point in having two professionals there, but maybe you could have two community volunteers with design experience, because it's very disappointing when you have to spend six months to get somebody trained to do the job.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move to close the public hearing.
Seconded. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion, roll call, please.
I do have some discussion.
Go ahead.
I want to...
Wait a minute, are we just closing the public hearing?
Closing the public hearing. Do you have a discussion on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. No, no discussion on that.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott? Oh, refused.
Not here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Merga Sully.
Yes, okay, first, why don't we make a motion, and then we can have comment on that, if someone would like to. We want these separately, right, Mr. Rubens?
Yeah, they're two separate actions.
Okay, so the first one is the ordinance?
I move to introduce ordinance number...
1530.
1530, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 2-24-155, and Section 18-26.040 relating to the Residential Design Review Committee.
Second.
All right, Mr. Collins, comments, questions?
I'm not, I think my comment is on the second...
Okay, fine, all right. Any other discussion on this item, on the ordinance part of it? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
And Merga Sully?
Yes, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-53, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos establishing the Residential Design Review Committee. residential design review committee composition.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, I moved in second, and Mr. Collins?
Okay, what I wanted to ask is, actually, I want to ask of Mr. Olbert, you mentioned that you were going to vote against it, because you, you didn't like the makeup of it. Do you have some other thoughts as to how we might redesign this committee?
To be clear, and for Jeff and Al's benefit, because I know they were sidebar-ing when I made the, had the discussion with Bob, Ron, it's not actually so much about an alternative composition as alternative training for the commissioners, okay? The point being, the point I was trying to make is, we, for example, up here on the dais, we make decisions all the time in matters that we are not experts in. We judge the experts. When the experts tell us something that doesn't make sense to us, we push back, and the experts may be sitting there going, if those guys only knew what I knew, they'd know that that was a stupid question. That doesn't matter. We just push back and say, that doesn't work with what we're trying to do. And my point simply was that rather than create a system where we have battling experts, okay, that we empower commissioners, who could be ordinary citizen volunteers, who don't necessarily have design experience, although that would be a nice plus, to say, I'm sorry, that doesn't make any sense to me, when this person asks that we, you know, move this wing in a different place, and you just told me that that's impossible, I don't believe it's impossible, okay? And if there's a majority of the RDRC that concurs with that, then the architect has a problem. They've got to go back and come up with either a way to educate the, the people, saying, no, it really is impossible, or, what I think is far more likely to be the case, they'll come back with a different design. That's all I meant, okay?
Okay, all right, any further discussion on the, on the motion for the resolution? Hearing now, roll call please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
No.
Nergasili?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Moving on, item 10, council communications and announcements, council members' reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Is there anyone wanting to speak?
Mr. Mayor, should be, do we know if Matt left, or should we ask him to come back in?
I kind of think he left.
Oh, okay, fine, I just, I don't know if he has anything to report, but I want him to have the opportunity if he does.
I think he probably left.
I have nothing to report, I know you'll be relieved to hear that.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I actually do have a couple things. For the first time last week, I attended the youth advisory committee interviews for choosing their members for next year, and they held interviews over two days, and I have to say, it really sort of renewed my hope in the future. We have a lot of young, intelligent, talented, young people in this town, great kids, some in middle school, some in high school, and I was just, I'm very impressed by all of them, the applicants, you know, the ideas they have. It was really refreshing to go to that, and kind of renewed my faith in, in the future of our country. The second thing is, I attended the HIP Housing Lunch on Friday, which was the largest attendance that I believe that they've had, they raised over $80,000. The guest speaker was Wanda Durant, the mother of Kevin Durant, plays for the Warriors, and she auctioned off an autographed baseball by him, basketball by, I think it got $4,000. And then the last thing I would like to do is invite all of my colleagues to attend the Hart Annual Fundraiser at Devil's Canyon. It is a week from Thursday, it starts from 5:30 to 7:30 at Devil's Canyon, and if you like, I can have Crystal send you the invitation, if you haven't done that already, but I will, I can make sure that that happens. And that's all I have.
Okay, I got a couple of things, as reminded by Mr. Olbert, this coming weekend is Hometown Days, so hopefully we'll all be there riding and participating in all the various events. I know I'm apparently volunteered for the pet parade on Sunday again, which is the most dangerous thing I've ever done, and as a city council member, or as mayor. But, anyway, I encourage everybody to come out, God willing, the weather will be good, and we'll have a wonderful time at Hometown Days. Secondly, what was the other thing? Oh, the, I wanted to report, since I'm the representative on the Silicon Valley Clean Water Commission, that we have a new executive director, Teresa Herrera, replacing Dan Child. Mr. Child resigned this week, and so we will have, Teresa is taking over. Teresa has numerous years, probably over 25 years, experience in wastewater, and has been the assistant manager there for the entire time, I believe, almost the entire time that I've been on the, the commission, which is over 10 years. And thirdly, which I have completely forgot what I was going to be thirdly, but I guess it couldn't have been that important...
Don't attend the meeting until you're ready.
Right, well, we'll just wait here. Anyway, I can't remember what the third thing was, but I appreciate all the comments tonight, and if there's nothing else, we'll go to staff for comments. Oh, I know what it was, excuse me, Mr. Malpe, we will not be having a city council meeting on May 29th, it was originally scheduled, but the agenda, there's nothing really, Mr. Malpe has told me to be put on the agenda, so we won't be having a meeting on May 29th. There will be no council meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to let, remind the council, and let the public know, that we will be hosting our second community meeting this Thursday night on our gun moratorium and our firearm regulations in terms of the retail sales of firearms and ammunition in San Carlos. So, that'll be held this Thursday night at the Hillary Aviation Museum from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Okay, is there anything else that anyone has? All right, then, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.